So good evening to everybody. It's six o'clock today on Thursday, May 21st. And I'd like to call this meeting of the Silver Lake Regional School Committee to order. And I'd just like to do a roll call of the members of the committee to make sure we have a quorum. So if you hear your name, I'm going to start at the end of the table with Mike. Just be ready to let me know you're here. Mike, are you with us tonight?
Yes.
Thank you, Mike. Paula, are you with us tonight? Paula, are you with us tonight? All right, come back to Paula. Chris told me he would be late, but I'll check. Is Chris here with us right now? Okay, Gordon, are you with us?
I'm present.
Thank you, Gordon. Laura, are you here?
Yes.
Thank you, Laura. Leslie Ann, are you here? Leslie Ann, are you with us? Okay, Ed, are you with us tonight? Eric?
Yes.
Thank you, and I see Paula has joined us. Paula, are you able to hear us and speak?
I am, but it sounds like you're doing a séance.
A séance.
Yeah, Ed, are you here with us tonight?
Yeah, well, the parlance has not been codified yet. This is still new to us all, even though it's really old, really fast. So thank you, everyone. We do have a quorum. We have membership from every town, and we have enough votes to hold the meeting this evening. I just want to let session here at the beginning of the meeting. And I can't tell you exactly how long that will take. Eric, do you have any idea of the minimum amount of time you think it's going to take for executive tonight?
I would say minimum of 10 minutes.
Minimum of 10 minutes. Okay, so I guess I will say to the general public, I will not reconvene the Silver Lake regular session until 6:20 at the earliest. So if you need to do anything and you want to leave your computer, I promise I will not begin the regular session until 6:20. It may be later than that, but it will be no earlier than 6:20. So just according to provisions set forth by Governor Baker as part of the COVID-19 emergency measures, some aspects of the open meeting law have been suspended to allow us to meet remotely like this. We are videotaping today's proceedings. I saw a picture of me sitting in my room here in the newspaper recently. That was interesting. So just be aware that this is a public meeting. And if you're eating pizza or having a drink, please feel free, but be aware that you may end up in the newspaper. So I have received no correspondence, which is our way of handling public participation during these meetings at this point. So I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing contract negotiation to return to regular session for the rest of our general meeting.
So move.
Okay, I have Eric moving it. Can I have a second from someone?
Second.
Thank you, Paula. And I have to do a roll call with everyone. So Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. Paula?
Yes.
Thank you. Gordon?
Yes.
Thank you. Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. Eric?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well.
And Leslie Ann is on.
Leslie Ann, are you going to executive session? Thank you very much, Leslie Ann. All right, so again, to the general public, I promise we will not begin before 6:20. But we may be later than that. So we will return. Thank you.
Jason?
Yes? Lisa?
I believe that Ed DeGenet has joined us.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Ed.
So to the committee, I believe Lisa supplied us with another link to go to executive session. I know it might take you a minute or two to find it. So we'll wait for you guys to all show up there. But just look back in your original email when we had to repost for the Google meets, and it is included in that same email. And Eric, I'm going to have to ask you to fill in as chair because I can't hear anybody right now.
Okay.
The next item is the minutes, and then to the principals' reports, and I'll try and figure out what my problem is.
And what you could do, Jason, is call in on the phone number because when my internet hasn't worked, the call-in tends to work for me in my other meetings, too.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I think our next item is the approval of the minutes. So if everyone's had a chance to review the minutes for April 9th, April 23rd, May 8th, May 12th, and May 13th, I would entertain a motion to approve those meeting minutes.
So move. This is Leslie Ann.
Thank you, Leslie Ann. Do I have a second?
Second from Laura.
All right, thank you, Laura. So I will take a roll call vote. I am, yes. Jason, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm back, and I'm a yes as well. Thank you.
All right, Ed?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep. And you're a yes?
Yes.
Leslie Ann?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Gordon?
Yes.
And Mike? Is Mike on? Okay, we don't have him, but I think we've got enough votes. So thank you. All right, our next item is principal report. So Mrs. Gill, you have the floor.
Hello, good evening, everyone. How are you?
Good to see you.
Thank you. I have to find everybody's little square. Let's start off tonight with three student handbook change proposals that we have, all three of which have been vetted through our school council. We've talked a little bit about them at previous meetings, but you have a copy of each of the proposals. It's highlighted in red, change would be. The first proposal is to update our cell phone policy. Our current policy, as it reads, is a little outdated. It actually precedes our one-to-one program. With the intention that before we had one-to-one devices, we wanted teachers to have the flexibility to allow students in their classes to access technology or access websites using their own devices. Now that we're one school, and to be quite frank, social media and technology has changed quite a bit in the last, you know, six to eight years. We are looking to make a change that would actually closely mirror what the middle school policy is. How students to use their cell phones during instructional time. But it sort of states the the expectations. We would also limit cell phone use in areas like the main office, the nurse's office, just to kind of help with the the clearly set boundary throughout the whole school. So there wouldn't be any concern whether or not a student could be on their phone if the expectation is they shouldn't be on it at all during instructional time. So that is the first proposal. The second proposal that we have is feedback from our staff and again vetted through our school council. Change how we proceed and how we administer our discipline, our detention hours. Our current model, the student is assigned a detention hour. They they're ineligible until they make it up. And although we assign a specific rate for that detention, they can do hours. Literally for four years. So the only incentive to really serve those hours is if they're an athlete and they want to participate in sports, or if they want to attend any of our dances throughout the school year. Isn't interested in sports, or they don't want to attend the prom, for example. There's really no motivation to serve those hours. And so the last thing we kind of hold over their head at their senior year is you won't get graduation unless you serve these hours. And so, you know, there's really no connection between a tardy, let's say, from their freshman year to serving that hour four years later. And so that we can have a more immediate system because our goal is to change behavior right away so that that maybe doesn't continue with that behavior down the road. So our proposal that we are sharing is for instead of accruing hours, we would go from detention hour owed to if that is missed, then to an extended detention is owed. If that is missed, Saturday detention is owed. And if that is, it's kind of fall back into what we currently have in our handbook, which is an ace that would be assigned. And in doing so, we kind of wipe out that accrual of hours, and it's a more immediate consequence so that we can hopefully change that behavior. Or adding a line to ensure that phones are not used during detention as well. Just to that. So the third proposal that we have tonight, if you recall before, the night before the pandemic hit, had a group of administrators and teachers who presented the LEAP program to how we would like to sort of shift gears in how we support and tackle the concern around vaping. And we've studied a couple of different programs. Maybe you came together to really kind of focus on what can we do to educate our students and our families to, again, change behavior and help curb the addiction as opposed to assigning out-of-school suspensions. It's going to go home and possibly vape more and then just continue that addiction. So if you recall last March, the group presented what that program looks like. It's a five-week program. And so the proposal is to reflect that change and include that proposal so that student is vaping, they have the option of completing the LEAP program to, again, the goal is to change their behavior. And then if they chose not to complete that program, we are asking your permission to change it from a five-day out-of-school suspension to an in-school suspension. So at the very least, you know, we can put them that way, and they're still receiving access to their education. Not making poor choices during those hours that they would be in ace. So those are our three proposals. I don't know if it's more helpful to have, you know, vote on them next meeting, or, you know, you want to vote now if you've had a chance to look at them.
Let's ask the committee if they have any questions or comments. Because those are pretty well thought out policies and procedures updated for today's modern school. We might be able to clear this off the books for you tonight. So does anybody from the committee have any questions for Mrs. Gill? No. Is this Mike? Okay. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
It might just be feedback. Okay, I'm seeing no comments in the chat. Could any committee members let me know if they'd like to ask a question or make a comment? Because I cannot see everybody's hand right now.
Jason, can I make, this is Leslie Ann. Can I make a motion to approve those three?
Thank you, Leslie Ann. You may. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second, Chris.
Second from Chris. And again, if anybody wants to make a comment or a question from the committee before we vote, please put it into the chat now. So I know that's your hand being raised. Okay. Seeing none, I will take a roll call vote to approve the three proposals for the cell phone rule change, modifying the detention policy and updating how we handle vaping incidents at the high school. How do you vote, Mike? Okay, I don't hear Mike. How do you vote, Paula?
Yes.
Thank you, Paula. Chris?
Yeah.
Thank you. Gordon?
Sorry, I was still reading the I vote yes, but still reading.
Okay, no problem, Gordon. Sorry about that. Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie Ann?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So congratulations, your new policies are supported by the school committee.
Thank you for your support. I know our staff but I also want to point out that we had students involved with every single one of these changes. And I think it's important to note that they also recognize that these changes are important for their learning experience. I have a graduation date change request for the school committee. I'd like to formally ask you to authorize the change to the 2019-2020 school calendar and update the graduation ceremony date from May 30th to August 7th with a rain date of August 8th. We do not want students to have to wait to earn their diplomas in August. So if a student has met the requirements by next week, they will have officially graduated by May 30th. The ceremony would really just be the commencement exercise, but we could give them their diploma and their final transcript before that if they need it. For example, if we have students who are entering the armed forces and have to do for basic training. Today, we received guidance from Commissioner Riley that allows schools to host outdoor graduations after July 19th with special safety standards in place. So I would, of course, work with my admin team and graduation committee to ensure that we are in compliance for an August 7th ceremony.
Do I have any questions from the committee about the change of date of graduation to August the 7th with the rain date of August the 8th with the regulations of the state being adhered to? Any questions or comments?
I'd just like to make a motion to approve that.
Okay, Laura makes a motion to approve that.
And I would suggest that Eric second it since we've got seniors graduating.
Okay, I'll second it.
There you go. There you go, guys.
Jason, Paula has a question.
Paula, go ahead.
It was more, it wasn't really a question. It was a comment. I want to thank you, Michaela and everybody else involved for continuing to pursue a graduation ceremony because I hear so many stories of different schools and colleges not continuing to pursue this, and it is so important. And I thank you so much for doing this for the students.
Absolutely. And again, this was, you know, driven by our students. You know, we met with our graduation committee and our class officers and, you know, we you know, we kind of left it up to them because this is their special occasion, and we said we were willing to do whatever they really wanted or needed them and their class. It was very important that they have an actual and to them, they would rather have it in August than not have it at all. So thank you for your support. There'll be a lot of happy seniors.
Any other absolutely. Any other questions, comments, or congratulations from the committee? All right, I can tell you for one that I'm thrilled to hear that. No matter how far away I have to stand from the stage, I will be in attendance. So we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. And seeing no further discussion, let's take a vote. Mike, do you approve the change to the calendar?
Yes.
Thank you. Paula?
Yes, absolutely.
Great. Chris?
Yeah.
Gordon?
Yes.
Laura?
Definitely yes.
Leslie Ann?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
And Eric?
Two yeses.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's nice to finally take a vote that I think everyone can be happy about. So thank you for that opportunity. Appreciate it.
How about one more opportunity for that? Next weekend, May 30th, is what was supposed to be their graduation day. So I am seeking your support in hosting a senior car graduation parade. My team and I, we have met. We sought approval from the Kingston Board of Health. We have the go-ahead from them. We met with all three town police chiefs this morning. They are all in support and are to help us pull off an event that would allow seniors in their vehicle with their parents line up at their elementary schools in their cars, have a police escort to the high school where they would be able to travel through campus. Put all the schools masks six feet apart from each other, cheer them on, and just celebrate them on the date and time of what would have been their graduation.
Yeah, that sounds like a wonderful idea again. And I have no problems with it. Just one quick question, Michaela, and I'm sure you've already covered this. I just would like you to have the opportunity to say it out loud. Obviously, any staff member or any student who feels uncomfortable with this has been told that this is a purely voluntary event.
Absolutely, completely optional.
Right. Again, it sounds wonderful, and I'm so thankful that efforts have been put forth to keeping our seniors at the top of the list of our priorities during this extremely strange time. So thank you for that. Would anybody like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to allow Michaela to do that.
All right, so Ed has made the motion to allow the car parade. Do I have a second? I have a second from Laura. Okay. Mike?
Yeah.
Thank you. Paula?
Yes.
Thank you. Chris?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Leslie Ann?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And a yes from me as well. Thank you, Michaela. That's great.
Thank you, everyone. I'd like to thank our PTO and Yearbook Club for providing a yard sign for each of our graduates this year. At the beginning of the year, families had an opportunity to order custom signs, and several families did take advantage of that. But when they came in, our really jumped at the opportunity to purchase several, you know, about 150 additional signs to make sure that every graduate would have one, seeing as they couldn't have the full senior experience this year. So we delivered over 100 signs last week, and we have a safe curbside delivery for families who chose the pickup method will be happening tomorrow. But I really just like to thank both of those organizations for funding that special project for our seniors. PTO also purchased yard signs for every staff member at the high school as part of Teacher Appreciation Week. So it's a albeit a really bizarre time, it is kind of a neat little memento for our staff members to have. So thank you to them. So as far as school updates go, our two weeks of AP testing ends tomorrow. Educators across the globe are really disappointed in the rollout of the AP exams, and students nationwide experienced complications, especially when it came time to submit their answers. Our school is one of just hundreds who are working with the college board. But as of right now, their response is really that the student can retest in June at no additional cost. So we'll be working with our students who were unable to submit their answers and their families and trying to help them decide whether or not they want to retest in June or not. Some have already indicated, unfortunately, that I think they're going to opt out of that retest. But we'll continue to connect and make sure that they're provided all the support they need if they wish to take that test again. Quite a frustrating process, though. We had approximately 260 students taking nearly 600 exams these last two weeks. So still an incredible feat considering the circumstances that our students are up against this year. So very proud of them.
Michaela, can I just make a point on the AP testing fiasco that we encountered? The Massachusetts Association of School Committees is part of a group pursuing litigation against the National Board exam because of how the AP test came out. So it's being pursued by multiple angles in support of our students. It was really trying for them to prepare for this in the circumstances. We had teachers at Silver Lake who were having extra study hours with their students, really went above and beyond to try and get our kids ready. And unfortunately, it could have been just an accident, but it seems like it could have been prevented. And unfortunately, our kids bore the brunt of this fiasco. So we are supporting you, Michaela, and your students. We just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you. And, you know, our teachers share in the heartbreak, too, over some of the complications that our students face. So a lot of frustration, but still, we're very proud of our students. Though not in the building, our staff and students continue to go above and beyond. Last week, one of our art teachers, Rachel McGuire, created a virtual field trip experience for her students. Together, they traveled to New York City to the Whitney and New Museum. And I think this was possibly the first out-of-state field trip we did not need school committee approval for. And New York City traffic was non-existent for them. Jackie Bissett, who is our early education and care teacher, has been working nonstop, providing remote instruction, not only to her high school students, but also for preschool students. She was awarded our May, excuse me, our April Faculty Member of the Month, so I wanted to give her a little bit of a shout out. Bruce Moulthorpe, who is our automotive teacher, has converted his garage into an online classroom, and he has like a whole recording feature to provide instruction. He's taking apart a truck in his garage and putting it back together with his students. And I just wanted to highlight some of these things. Rachel Dillon, one of our history teachers, in addition to following the curriculum, she has started a virtual history movie club. So similar to a book club, students are watching history-based films with their families and then joining into a conversation. And I just think it goes to show and highlight how creative our teachers are getting during this time and the length they're taking to engage their students throughout remote instruction. So just a small sample of what our staff are doing right now. Our students likewise are using this as an opportunity to serve their peers in their community. Members of our student council organized a school-wide bingo game on social media. Our senior athletes filmed an encouraging video for underclassmen. Our National Honor Society members are seeking ways to tutor their classmates and students virtually. And members of our best buddies club meet regularly with their friends for virtual game nights to help promote a social connection with students who are struggling during this closure. And then many of our students are finding creative ways to support and recognize our essential workers, whether it's sewing masks or launching food drives for their community. So just, I'm a very proud principal. Just wanted to share that with everybody. So thank you.
No, we all needed to hear some good news. And what better way to hear the good work that our students are doing and our teachers are doing? And that that part about the best buddies group reaching out to some of their their buddies during this time, that really strikes a personal chord with me, and I can't tell you how appreciative I am to know that students are looking out for each other during this time. So thank you for that. Any questions or comments for our principal of our high school from the committee?
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Okay. Jim, are you ready to go?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Jason.
Good to see you, Jim.
Good to see everybody. Hopefully, we can see each other in person again soon. So a couple of quick things. So student handbook is the first thing I'm just going to touch base on. So student handbook changes. The first one is just some minor adjustments in the way that we do business, which now with Power School, we give it a digital correspondence so that parents have access to that immediately once we register them into the school. So that's just updating our handbook to represent what we do that's a little more efficient than what we used to do in the past. So that's the first one. The second one, too, is really catching up our handbook to what we do, which is digital midterm reports and report cards. So we're just updating our handbook to represent what we are currently doing. The third one is in regards to levels of instruction. And one of the things that we wanted to make an adjustment to was to give kids more opportunity to challenge themselves at the middle school. So to give them an opportunity to challenge themselves, gives parents an opportunity to be involved, to help and support their students in that challenge. And what this does, it gives the parents an opportunity to sign their student into the accelerated sections of math, ELA, or science at the middle school. And again, what we want to do is give every student the opportunity to make that challenge, to create that challenge. And this allows them that opportunity. And then the second piece just talks about the process to allow that to happen. So that's the accelerated piece that we're looking to change. The next addition really is just a small piece. It's just an update to the handbook to just represent that we always want to make sure that we have a staff member available for students that come down to the library. So if they're coming down in an unscheduled time, we still want to make the library available, but we just want to make sure that the librarian is there to greet the student and help and assist them in the library. So we're just trying to denote a process that we already do in our school, but denote it in the handbook as well so that it's notified. The second, the next one is the visitors. Obviously, we had a revision in the way that we greet visitors coming into the building in regards to safety. So we have now have dual locks on two sets of doors. We have a window that we had put in so that parents We have a window that we had put in so that parents don't even have to come in the building. If they're trying to drop something off to their child, they can just drop it off the window and they don't have to go through that process. Makes it a little more easier for parents to drop off lunch, lunch money, things like that, paper, homework, what it might be. And this is just to represent that process for parents that we already are currently doing, but to denote it again in the handbook. One of the things we wanted to update to our cell phone policy, it's funny because Michaela was talking about that just a minute ago, is we also wanted to add smart devices. It seems like every time that we have a policy that wants to keep students focused on education, that there's smart devices out there that can avoid the policy, right? They can go around it. They have some kind of a smart device that accesses their phone, but it's not a phone. So we're trying to update that because, you know, we're in the middle, you know, of telling students, oh, you can't have that. Please don't have that smart device because it really works as a phone and it's a distraction from the classroom. So we want to update in the handbook too, because sometimes you'll have a student who will be like, well, I didn't see that in the handbook. So, you know, why is there an issue, you know? And so you have to have that conversation with them about, you know, well, the cell phone intent is to not have you distracted by your cell phone. The smart device accesses your cell phone. So it's just an avenue again to have your cell phone. So anyway, it's just to kind of denote that in the handbook, just for clarity. And the last update really is the one with the health clinic, just noting to parents, you know, that there's a procedure. This procedure is already in place, but that procedure is that if they do notice that there's a new injury or something to a student, that they need to send them to the nurse to just have them evaluated to make sure that student is safe and that that student is okay. And that's what that last piece denotes. And that's it for our student handbook updates.
So are there any questions for Jim before I read off a proposed motion with a lot of items there? I think they all make sense, Jim, but just want to make sure there's no questions before we move forward. Any questions from the committee for Jim? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to allow for the changes to the digital correspondence, digital midterm and report cards, students being able to sign into Accelerated with student and parent permission as an opportunity to challenge themselves. An update to the library staffing notice that's already being performed in the middle school. Visitor protocols to the building, cell phone and adding smart device to that aspect of the middle school handbook. And also further explaining some of the procedures of the health services for students at the middle school.
So moved.
Thank you, Paula. Do I have a second?
Second from Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. Paula?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Thank you. Gordon?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Leslie Ann?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And a yes from me as well. Okay, thank you, Jim.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate that. So I just want to talk about a couple of things. First of all, I'll lead with events because, you know, Michaela had already kind of talked about her events. I just want to say that, you know, obviously, we don't have seniors at the middle school and, you know, I understand how hard Michaela is working on that. And I want to congratulate her on really trying to facilitate and foster that environment for our seniors during this difficult time. I know I have a senior at home. So as a parent and as a colleague, I really appreciate her hard work on that and the teachers at the high school. So I want to thank them for that. Our events at the middle school, our last time to kind of see our eighth graders come in Field Day and our eighth grade semi-formal. And so one of the things that we're planning on doing is rescheduling those times to August when it's a safe time for us to have those events. It's our last chance to say goodbye to our students where we won't see them again come September. And something that we had talked about with our PTO, who also supports these events, and everyone on board was very excited about us looking at rescheduling those events for August. A third event that we'd like to reschedule for August is our induction ceremony. So we have some eighth grades for our Junior Honor Society that are going to be inducted. And we just want to make sure that we have that opportunity for everybody to be involved with our induction. And we're hoping to do that in August too. So I just want to reach out and kind of talk about that and maybe get your approval to move forward and try and do pull a few August dates to have those events if it's safe to do so at that time.
Any questions or comments for Jim?
Jason, this is Leslie Ann. Jim, long live Field Day. Near and dear to my heart, as you know, since I wrote the 12-page manual on it.
You did. You did a great job. Leslie helped reinvent Field Day for us way back when. And we've continued to build on some of the pieces that she put in place in regards using some water elements and things like that to really make it an eventful day for the kids. So I'm with Leslie. It's really a great day for our kids. So.
Absolutely. Anybody else for Jim? Okay, do you need any formal statement from us, Jim, on that? Or is it just an update more or less?
Just an update and, you know, with you guys' support, I'll continue to move that piece forward if that's, again. So if it's all right.
Sounds like you definitely have that support.
Thanks, Jason. I'd also like to make mention, you know, of our teachers. I'm going to just talk about some of the things that our teachers are doing during this distance learning. One of the things that they've really worked hard on and one of the things that our communities have asked us for is aligning our communication. And one of the things that, and I'm so happy with how much effort and work they've done to make this happen. But each team has now a team log that goes out Monday morning with all the assignments, the meets, the times. Everything is on that one page. And not only have we been able to do that, but we also linked it to the off-team teachers for that grade. So therefore, any assignment, so when a student gets their weekly meet agenda, their weekly agenda from their team on Monday morning, it has all the team teachers on it, then it has a link to any elective or off-team teacher they have. So it's one stop for parents and for students. And there's a lot to manage when we go through this distance learning piece in regards to emails, communication and everything else. And for our teachers, you know, and again, they've worked really hard to try to unify and unite this. I really give them a lot of credit for doing that because it really makes a difference in regards to our communication. So a world of, just a world of gratitude for all their hard work on that.
Yeah, Jim, I'd just like to echo that as well. I know that we had a meeting over April vacation just to talk about the evolution of distance learning in Silver Lake. And I definitely seen from both the committee position, but also as a parent and a community member, quite a bit of change occurring, you know, from day one, but definitely since the administrative team and the teachers came together to really try and hone in on those practices. And I'm extremely proud of the work I've been seeing and kudos to the teachers for, again, trying to redevelop the definition of what teaching is, while also trying to manage their own situation in these uncharted territory in time. So thank you to the teachers, like you said.
I couldn't agree more, Jason. And the hard work happens on a daily basis because there, obviously, there, the distance learning does create a space, but they have worked so hard to eliminate some of that space and stay connected to their students. I know that they meet weekly to talk about the students on their team and they're reaching out continuously with students that are struggling and they're reaching out continuously to students that just need that further engagement. And I thank them for that. And other things they've created, they had a virtual field trip for the eighth grade and it was for the Constitution, which aligns with our new Soul Studies curriculum for the eighth grade. So all of our students have attended a virtual field trip, which is just really another creative way to engage our students. So I want to thank all of our teachers for putting that field trip together. Another thing, some of our off-team teachers have done, and Erica McGee was a big piece of this. They created cards for students that had been struggling and had handwritten messages to their students. And these postcards were getting mailed out this week so that they could handwritten messages from their teachers being sent home. And the card itself was something that they created through the art class. So again, that's through our school. So just some creative ways that our teachers really do go above and beyond to make sure our students are supported. So I want to thank all of them. I want to thank all of our staff for their hard work during this time because it is greatly appreciated. And that's it for me. So thank you, Jason.
And that idea of sending home the cards and that personal touch to the students who are struggling during this time, great move. And again, that makes my heart swell, just like hearing about the best buddies reaching out. A lot of kids and a lot of families are struggling right now. And to keep those people in the forefront of our thoughts is a very important gesture. And I'm glad to know that your school and your teachers are a part of that. So thank you, Jim.
It's funny, Jason. I'll give you just one more tidbit. This is kind of like an anecdotal thing. But so on my weekly message that I send out to parents, I always, I put my cell phone in there so that if parents have a question or concern, they can reach out, which they have and they've given me feedback. But I also want to say something about our students too, that I've had over 30 students text me and reach out on my cell phone just to check in. It's usually, hey, Mr. Peel, how's it going? Or something like that. So they're with us and it's meaningful. So again, thanks, everybody for that. And thank you guys always for your support for our schools because without it, it really does take a village. And we really appreciate you guys' support. So thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it. Any questions for Jim? Go ahead, Paula.
That's a wonderful personal touch. And if I had a child in the middle school, that would mean so much to me. Kudos to you. That's a wonderful personal touch.
Thank you, Paula.
Yeah, great. Thank you so much, Jim. All right, on to our business manager, Christine.
Good evening again, everybody.
Hi, Christine.
This may seem odd, but our budget's doing okay. We're in a pretty good place in our current budget. Nothing's really changed drastically since we spoke last. We have a handful of deficits that will be absorbed within their function codes. That shouldn't be a problem. The big areas of concern have been the big areas of concern since early on in the year. Homeless transportation, which that will not, that should not continue to grow because it's no more transportation. Maintenance, we have deficit of $41,000, but that takes care of all those odd events that happen throughout the year. And then under psychological contracted services, we have a deficit there because one of the new things that we've had to pay for is for students to attend recovery high schools. So we're just taking care of that, doing what we can. There are some areas of savings and we're looking at, make sure our buildings will be all set to start for next year. And whatever needs to be done, we will take care of to make sure that they're a positive learning environment and they're safe and available. And that's it, unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Christine. Any questions for Christine?
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to switch us over to our superintendent and assistant superintendent. And I just want to say that they're about to have their four-month anniversary in their positions. I want to bring that to light because back when we had the evacuation of the high school, we thought they handled that with poise and grace and professionalism. And we were so proud of them doing that and handling that one situation at the beginning of their tenure. Who would have known that that would have been a minor feat compared to what they've been putting up with in the past two months? So Jill and Ryan, without further ado, thank you for all you do and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Jason. And certainly, we would not have survived without the help of our staff, our administrators and our school committee and our community and our students who have really risen to the challenge. So thank you all. I want to begin with actually discussion and vote on an item. State law requires that we carry over vacation time if employees did not have the opportunity to take vacation time. And so I'm asking the school committee to vote a one-time vacation rollover for our non-faculty contracts to be used no later than June 30th, 2021.
Any questions or comments from the committee?
Jason, this is Leslie Ann. I'm just wondering if I could ask Jill a quick question?
Go ahead.
Do you have an estimate of that liability number? How many days? How many, like what?
I can tell you that it is 59 people primarily support staff. I'm sorry, I'm looking up the list right now. And I mean, it ranges from zero days to I'm thinking 20 days based upon a quick glance, but there are 59 people here. So and it's, it's, it's a wide variety. Some people only have three days. Some people haven't, haven't used their days or some people were already carrying over days from a previous year. So it's a variety.
Okay, thanks.
Eric?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we were presented with the same thing at the elementary school committee and we voted for this. It was specifically, I mean, these people weren't able to take their vacations because of what's been going on with the pandemic, obviously.
So Eric, would you like to make a motion to see us do the same here at Silver Lake?
Still moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ed. Any further discussion from committee members before we vote? Okay, seeing none. Mike?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Leslie Ann?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And yes from me as well.
Thank you, everyone. Our next update is the COVID-19 emergency update. And one of the things that we have asked for and our nurses have put together for us is to begin to put together a list of PPEs and other materials that may be necessary for the return to school in the fall and to share those recommended lists with their building principals. And they provided that list to principals, I think it was on Tuesday. And we discussed those lists today. In addition, building principals are working with their custodial staff. And we also met with Matt Durkey, who will become the facilities director on June 15th to help welcome and mentor him into his new role, which will begin in June, but also to prepare him in terms of some of the things we've been thinking about and considering for the opening in the fall so that he can begin to be part of these conversations to help ease the transition. And also to help us to take advantage of his expertise as well as we move into this next phase. So that will, that's something we're continuing to look at. And we anticipate for the guidance from the state, but we don't want to wait for the state. We want to start preparing ourselves and thinking about what that may look like and what we may need in terms of supplies and keeping our staff and students safe to the best of our ability. In terms of the remote learning update, the remote learning plan was sent out to families. Ryan sent that out. Along with it was a list of frequently asked questions, which was developed by the administrative team, which we also supplied. Based upon survey feedback, we made changes to the remote learning plan. We also incorporated guidance from the Department of Education to help improve upon our efforts. And we will be focusing on the learning of new material that is critical to student success in, for the following year. And we also have begun to expand our lunch opportunities and in terms of there are a greater number of students who are food insecure. And our food service director is looking at streamlining services to make it most likely fewer days for pickup. She's looking to go to a model of a two-day pickup instead of She's looking to go to a model of a two day pick pickup instead of a three day pickup to make it easier for parents who are picking up, but also more protective for for the staff as well. So we're expecting some some changes in terms of the number of days, but not in the number of meals. So we're still going to provide that service for our our families and our our students. But we may be we may be altering the the schedule and that may come as early as next week. But please stay tuned for that. We're we're working on that. In addition, Ryan is working on a survey for to go once again to go out to our community. And we also met with the technology team and our elementary coordinator to talk about putting together a a remote learning website for our staff, particularly to provide them with examples of best practices and resources, not only for this year, but potentially for the future as we begin to keep an eye on what that might look like in the fall. And so our administrative team, our principals, central office and our staff are beginning to look at what that might look like next year and trying to begin to anticipate what some of our needs may be. And what we have learned from our experiences thus far so that we can use those lessons to help inform our approach in the in the fall. And I think that's it for our remote learning update for for tonight. But I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do I have any questions from the committee?
Jason?
Gordon, go ahead.
If we have to start off the fall in a distance learning situation, have you received any feedback from DUCY on when they would be looking to give us further guidance?
We don't have a deadline or date yet, but it is coming.
Thanks, Jill.
Jason, this is Lesley Ann.
Go ahead, Lesley Ann.
Want to ask Jill a question?
Not at all.
Jill, to Gordon's question about the fall, which I know you have so many things lined up to deal with before that. But it's around the corner. I'm wondering, are you thinking about setting up some kind of working group for that? And and would it be appropriate if if a school committee member served on it? If Jason was amenable to it?
So we we have only begun to start talking about what that process is going to look like. And we do want to incorporate feedback from our families as well. We're open to open to membership in terms, but we also need to work with numbers. As you can see, we have ninety seven people on the screen tonight. So our remote working group would need to be limited and we certainly need to represent all our schools as well. So I think what it would be best is probably go back to the administrative team and and ask them basically what that would look like, what they would recommend, and then how we would go about deciding how those positions were filled on the team. But I think it's a wonderful idea to have some volunteers and some voices. People from the communities, parents and school committee members who could who could help in that process. I just, we haven't thought out a processes as to how we would go about doing that or even what the charge of the work group would be yet. Because we're still in the phase of assembling all of the potential questions we have to ask ourselves before we solve them. So that was our first step today as an administrative team, and it was a lengthy list.
Any other questions from the committee on on that focus? OK, Jill, back to you.
Jason, one.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Gordon.
So on the event, some of the the guidance that I've seen passed around online was having multiple bus trips to bring students to school, splitting them up. Is that something that we should consider asking the superintendent to look into what the implications would be?
So
I'm not saying for anytime soon.
Yeah, I'm just going to tell you what what came out of last week's meeting with the Joint Committee on Education at the State House where Secretary Pfizer spoke and so did the Commissioner of Education. And they really asked all of the districts to be focusing on finishing up this year, to be looking at potentially summer school, which guidance, I believe Jill, still hasn't come out fully yet on what summer school should look like. And pleased to be patient and let the state come out with some guidelines before we start working on permutations. They are admitting, Secretary Pfizer said, there is no doubt in his mind that remote learning will be a fact, a reality of next year in some capacity, but he can't speak to it yet. So we're still working with the ideas that we might be doing face to face late August, early September. We might be doing a hybrid, which would include what you're talking about, Gordon, where we have to look at how many people are in buses or classrooms, or we might be doing remote learning. But with so many mites and so many possible permutations, we need to be cautious of where we're using our limited energy and resources right now. So focusing on finishing up this budget, getting through this year and looking at summer school. And then I think we can shift the focus to to how school looks when we come back next year. We are we are engaged, we are engaged in that in that conversation, but not putting too much work into it at this point.
Only reason why I'm bringing it up, Jason, is Plymouth County is having a a meeting tomorrow, I believe, to discuss the CARES Act money.
Right.
And I just
No, and and Eric has been our lead guy on the Plymouth County CARES money. And Kathy Linatra reached out to Jill, myself and Christine today with some further information about that, too. So it's not to say we're not pursuing the resources that are available to us now. I just don't want to lose too much time focusing on what it might look like in September. But we are pursuing the resources to to fit all three of those contingencies at this point. So Eric, can you hear me OK?
Yes, sorry, I was muted. I could
OK, just making sure.
Yeah, sorry.
So Gordon, again, just to make sure it's clear. You know, when the resources are available, we are reaching out for them. We are in contact with with the Plymouth County CARES money through Eric and through Kathy Linatra. And we're also keeping touch with the State House to see what the guidance is from them as well. But we're really trying to focus on, you know, getting through this budget cycle that we know has a tight deadline coming up for us. I'll talk more about that in the chairman's report. So limited resources, limited time and limited people. We have to keep our eye on some balls right now a little bit more firmly than others.
I understand. I just wanted to bring it up in the public session, that's all.
Thanks, I appreciate it, Gordon. All right. Any other questions about remote learning for the superintendent or for the assistant superintendent? All right, one more item, Jill?
Yes, the discussion of the payment of transportation vendors. So this has been we talked about a new transportation vendor earlier in this pandemic. That was our our bus company. But we have a variety of vendors across the district for special education in particular. In Silver Lake, we have a the the vendor is Vanpool. And so at one point, we had begun to discuss the potential payment and whether or not we would consider a memorandum of agreement that if we paid a certain amount, that workers wouldn't be laid off. What we do know now, and and at one point, we decided to hold off for further guidance from the state. What we do know, or we believe, our our special education director made us aware of was that Vanpool is petitioning the state for seventy seven percent payment. And so, again, I I don't have any additional information other than that from the state. I know, Jason, you had provided us with some information from the state. I don't know where the school committee stands at this point, but we we did want to discuss it at some point and and consider where we might want to go with this.
OK, so Eric would like to make a comment and then I can give background to the committee if they're interested. Go ahead, Eric.
So I we discussed this in Kingston as well. And and I'm against making payments for these types of transportation vendors. You know, some of these companies are like taxi or cab companies rather than like the school bus company. So a lot of these people, I'm sure, have been on unemployment and get the regular unemployment plus the six hundred dollars federal each week. So, you know, I'm less inclined to 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 make payments on things like this. But that's all I wanted to say.
Any other committee members have any questions, would like to make a motion for or against paying this bill?
Do we need to make a vote, a motion for this?
If we don't make a motion, I I don't think we can enter into the memorandum. So that would be a nonpayment. So not taking a stance on this would almost be a vote to the negative.
Right.
Right. So does any committee want to take up this vote or discuss it further? And I'm seeing no takers, Jill.
OK.
OK.
Thank you.
All right. So that concludes the superintendent's report. Does anybody have any questions for the superintendent or assistant superintendent before we move on to new business? Anybody from the committee have any questions for the superintendent or assistant superintendent? All right, seeing none. We have no new business on the agenda this evening. And old business on the agenda includes discussion and next steps for dual enrollment opportunities and addressing vaping impacts on the students in our schools. Those are both items that I champion. And being their champion, I will move to pass over those two items tonight for the sake of time. So I will now move on to the Silver Lake Education Association. If you would like to take the floor, it is yours.
Thank you, Jason. So, you know, I think my colleagues and I were hoping that there would be a little more open discussion of the budget tonight. You know, I understand that this is a normal meeting and hopefully there was a a lot of discussion of those issues in executive session. So I'd just like to inform the committee that we did have our general membership meeting today at three PM. And our negotiation team is is ready to sit down at the bargaining table as soon as possible and try to work out a fair resolution and hopefully be able to move forward in the best way possible.
And thanks, John, we really appreciate that. And you should be expecting to hear from us shortly. We did have a lot of other business on board, as you could tell. Proud business of all of your teachers and your students. And we wanted to make sure that we didn't neglect those items with all the business we've been engaged in recently. So under my chairman's report, we'll we'll have some updates on some upcoming meetings where we will be discussing the budget in more depth. So thank you for that, John. Moving on to admin review. I believe there's been no meeting, correct, Jill? OK, no meeting. And career and technical education, Chris, do you have any updates from CTE?
I have not. We don't have meetings yet. We probably need to get on the books before year end.
OK, thank you, Chris. So on to the chairman's report. I have been pursuing as extensively as humanly possible while also holding down a job and being a father numbers from the state and from the federal government that would help us come up with our budget. Shustin Thompson from Congressman Keating's office has been extremely helpful in trying to track down the CARES Funds Acts and the governor's funds for education. And she's an invaluable resource to me and to our schools. I've also been in contact with Representative Kathy Linatra several times a week. She just reached out to Jill and myself again today. But the sad truth is there are no numbers to be had at this point. Speaker of the House, DeLeo, said today that he could rush to give us numbers, but those numbers wouldn't be real. And until there's more concrete data to work from, he would feel remiss in his his job to just be handing out numbers sheerly because we're desperate for them. This is kind of ironic to a certain extent because one state organization is telling us they don't have numbers for us to work from. But we have another state organization, DUCY, who's telling us we need to supply them with our budget by June first. With with Monday being a holiday, by the way. We have to reconvene the Silver Lake School Committee next Thursday evening at six o'clock in order to vote a budget to get it done in time so Christine, our business manager, can file it with DUCY. All for them to be able to come up with potential one twelve budgets for us in our in our three towns. We are still extremely hopeful that two of our towns are planning to have town meeting prior to June thirtieth and will be able to vote our complete budget and see it done. So we will be back at this table. I I did ask people to bring their calendars so we could look at dates. We don't have that luxury. We're literally being pinned against the wall with no data from the state, but they want data from us. And we're going to do our best to do that next week on Thursday night at six o'clock, right here back at the table. I wish I had more answers for you. But it gives us a little time over the weekend to pause and really reflect upon the areas of our budget that we hold near and dear and would like to see preserved in the areas of our budget that we might be able to live without for a year. So there's no guarantee that next year will be any brighter than this year's budget is. Considering we don't even know what this year's numbers are, I'm not even going to speculate on next year at this point. So that will conclude my chairman's report and also my legislative report. So thank you very much. Moving on to negotiations. Any report from the negotiation team?
Had to unmute, sorry. But we will need to contact SLA and try to have a meeting very soon, obviously, if we could before next Thursday. I might have to be on Thursday.
Great, thank you, Eric. PAC, Ed? Report from PAC?
There was no meeting between last time we met. Now.
Thank you, Ed. Policy? Any policy meetings coming up, Jill?
We have a need to review policy because there are recommended changes, but we have not made that the priority.
OK, so we'll have an upcoming policy meeting to be announced. How about revolving funds? Any news from revolving funds?
None.
OK, thank you very much. Safety, facilities, fees and revenue, any report?
None.
Chris did bring up a good point, Paula, that we might want to divide and conquer with some of the items coming up. Also alluded to by Gordon's questions about reopening in September and making some plans that maybe we want to shift some of those discussions for the committee over to your committee. So we can focus on it a little bit more and have some more detailed conversations at that level. So it's up to you, Madam Chair of that committee. But it was a suggestion of of Chris, and I think it might satisfy some of Gordon's asking.
Yep, no, I would be open to that.
Great, thank you very much. School starts time is a placeholder in our acknowledgement, again, of the brain based research that's saying starting middle schools and high schools at later times would be beneficial to our students. We have had in the past a survey of our communities and it was pretty evenly split between school start times staying the same or changing. But we keep it there in acknowledgement that California as a whole this year did a statewide experiment to flip elementary times with secondary times. And we're waiting data from their partial year, at least, of having school on that new schedule. Treasurer's report.
Jason, I don't have the report.
No problem, Mike, I understand. Christine?
There were no warrants for tonight's meeting.
There were no warrants for tonight's meeting, so I was going to mention it when we got to single signature warrants.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
And Union 31?
No meeting.
No meeting. All right, so we're on to single signature warrants. Christine?
Thank you, and I'd like to thank the subcommittee that came in to sign Eric, oh, no, that signed electronically, Eric Cronin, Laura Tilton, and Chris Seklin. They electronically signed 16 warrants totaling $2,509,025.39. Thank you for taking care of that.
Yes, thank you very much. We appreciate that. So some future meeting dates and dates to remember. It is a long weekend coming up in remembrance of the service men and women who have given their lives in service to our country to defend our freedoms. Next Thursday, May 28th, we will also be having an additional Silver Lake Regional School Committee to discuss the budget. On June 13th, Kingston intends to have its town meeting. Gordon did inform me that June 15th is not Halifax Town Meeting. Gordon, am I speaking out of turn?
So we have it scheduled for Halifax Town Meeting, but I believe the moderator and the selectmen are going to move to adjourn the meeting and extend to a different date.
Okay, so Halifax residents, just stay tuned to some news coming out of the selectmen about town meeting. Plimpton intends to have its town meeting on June 17th. Our anticipated last day of school in the region and in the union is June 19th. Elections for Halifax and Plimpton are to be held on the 20th. Gordon, are you still going to hold elections on the 20th, or is that something?
Yes, we have to.
Okay. Kingston Town Elections are scheduled for June 27th, and it says July 9th is the next school committee meeting. I would be surprised if there are not a couple more between now and then. So just pay attention to the postings and to our resources, but we will definitely be back here next Thursday at 6:00 with the intention of focusing on the budget. And we are going to aim to vote a number, at the very least, next week, so Christine can file with the state, so we keep ourselves in compliance, and we keep control over our schools and not leave it up to bureaucrats at the State House. So
Jason?
Go ahead, Gordon.
Might I suggest that we ask admin review to also post for next Thursday night as well?
Okay, Gordon, thank you for that. Any other comments, questions, concerns from the committee before I entertain a motion to adjourn? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn from the committee.
This is Gordon, so moved.
Thank you, Gordon. Do I have a second?
Second from Chris.
All right, great. Thank you, everybody, for your patience this evening, and thank you for your continued dedication to Silver Lake Regional Schools. Appreciate it.
Good night.
Night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Good work, everybody. Thank you for your time.